Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council Regular Meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna have the infocation done by Kyle Driggers, Pastor of Monks Corner Pentecostal Holiness Church.
Join me in prayer, if you will. Father, we approach your throne this evening in the name that is above every name, the name of Jesus Christ. We pray for this council that you would grant them wisdom beyond their experience. Give them a heart of compassion as they lead this town. Help us to never allow greed or self-will to cloud our vision. Lord, remind us that we are called to love our neighbor and to do good to all men. Let this be the guiding force as decisions are made and plans are carried out. Help us to guard over our children, the elderly, and the less fortunate. Remind us that in our good fortune, it is our responsibility to extend a helping hand to those that are downcast. We pray for favor and blessings over the town of Monks Corner and over its residents. Let good health, financial security, and more importantly, spiritual growth abound here. Let us be a light to other towns and communities. And let us be an example that progress and godliness can walk hand in hand. And now, over the council members and the residents of this great town, I would like to speak this blessing. The Lord bless thee and keep thee. The Lord make his face to shine upon thee and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee and give thee peace. May the Lord put his name upon thee and bless thee. In Jesus' mighty name, we pray. And everyone say?
Amen.
Thank you. Councilman Lloyd will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna do the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
If no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? No. All right, reports. The mayor's report. I got a, I got quite a few things today. February twenty-ninth, I attended the police banquet and awards along with Councilman Dennis and Councilman Ware. It was a true honor to be there along with the women and men of the Monks Corner Police Department. It was a really special night, seeing the fellowship and, and the love that they have for one another is really, really special. March ninth, we did the ribbon cutting at the rec complex with Santee Cooper for the electric vehicle charging station. They also presented the town with a check for fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from the Celebrate the Season, and this money goes toward the Miracle League Field. Councilwoman Latore Lloyd and many staff members was also in attendance. March seventh, I was invited to Bonner Elementary for a tour of the school to watch their play Beauty and the Beast. They would like to do some art projects. Anyone who's been to Goose Creek has seen the electrical panels that have been painted, and they would like to reach out and see about doing some of those in Monks Corner. We also, on March eleventh, had a ribbon cutting for Wake Up Carolina. Councilman David Dennis and several staff members was present. This organization is doing amazing work to try to prevent overdose, dose deaths in Monks Corner. March fourteenth, we hosted Westview Middle School Special Needs Children at the Miracle Field. We played baseball and they had lunch under the pavilion. We had an amazing time. That was my first experience with anything with the Miracle Field, and it was, it was just exceptional to be there. This past Saturday, we had our shenanigans in the park. We had great crowds, great music, great vendors, great weather. It couldn't have been a better day. I wanna thank our staff who worked very hard to put this together. It, it couldn't have went better. March eighteenth, we had the ribbon cutting for Cappy's Italian Restaurant. They are now gonna be open for lunch. Councilwoman Lloyd was present and many staff members was present. And then this morning, I met with the Kiwanos of Berkeley County to introduce myself, talk about some of the vision of what's going on in the town and things that we're gonna be working on in the future. You know, as always, I took many texts, phone calls, messages, met with several people in the community. You know, us up here, we're your voice, so please, keep reaching out. Some of the future things we have going on is spring sports is starting. The recreation staff has been working double time to get this put together and to get it ready. First baseball game is on March twenty-fifth. We also have honoring our fallen heroes, Corporal Stiles and PFC Wells. That'll be March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, between eleven a.m. and one p.m. at the Train Depot. Our farmer's market is also getting ready to start. That will be Thursdays from three to seven, and that starts April fourth, so plan to be out there. And finally, our Miracle League season will be starting. If anyone out there would like to volunteer to be a buddy, we could use your help to keep this going and to make it an even better experience for these kids. The game schedules will be on Mondays, and it'll be April eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, May sixth, and the thirteenth. And that's all I have. Administrator's report, Mr. Lord.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I have a few updates for you. If you remember, a few months ago, you authorized three demolitions under the voluntary demolition assistance program, two on the present circle and one on Main Street. Those are done. Contract is complete. The sites have been cleared, leveled, and everything is, is clear. So those are two, uh, three complete demos, so it's good to get those done. Also, the Miracle League bathroom is complete, so that project is done as well. I wanna thank Mr. Faulner to, for him overseeing that project and making sure everything got done well on that. I think they did a really good job. It, it fits in well with the rest of the complex. The town received RFQ for engineering services. You know, we do this every few years, where we ask for qualifications from different engineering firms for site work as well as for our stormwater review process. So we received, I think, ten different qualifications, and so we'll be reviewing those and making recommendations, hopefully at the next council meeting for y'all to consider. And just a reminder, what we, what we try to do is we rank them, and then if we have a project, we'll go to number one. And then if they have a conflict or they cannot do it due to, you know, availability, then we would go to number two and then so on. So that hopefully will be for you for consideration next month. The mast arms that the town has done with the DOT on Stony Landing Road and Sterling Oaks, those are going up as we speak, so hopefully that will be done in the next couple of weeks, and they'll get the new signals operational. So good, good to have those on. And right now, there aren't any other intersections that DOT has reached out to us. If you remember, we just told them that when you're gonna redo an intersection, notify us, and then we can do the mast arms. And so the, the mast arm is up by CVS, and now these two, we have not heard on any others, but when we do, obviously, we'll bring those to you for consideration as well. The fire truck, very excited. We have two of our team from the fire department is currently inspecting the, the fire truck for delivery, doing a punch list. So hopefully, we'll have that down here and operational in the next few weeks. So I don't wanna jinx ourselves, but very glad. It's probably eighteen months, chief?
It's been?
So a long, long time to, you, you have to wait a long time for a fire truck, so we'll be very excited to have that. And just a reminder that we are taking our recreation Facebook page down. We've been advertising that we're migrating everything over to the main page, and that April first, we will no longer have that page. And we only have like four thousand followers, whereas on our main page, we're well over twenty thousand. So combining things together just makes things more, more simple. So that's all I have, but if council has any questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. New business. This is gonna be a first reading by title only. Consider a zoning map amendment, ZA dash twenty-four dash zero-one, request for approximately two point two acres located on Rembrandt C. Dennis Boulevard, TMS one forty-three dash oh-nine dash oh-four dash oh-thirty-four, and one forty-three dash oh-nine oh-four dash oh-thirty-three, from office and institutional C one to general commercial C two. Justin, can you please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay, Mr. Law has recused himself.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. As the mayor stated, this is a zoning map amendment for approximately two point two acres located on RC Dennis from C one to C two. Currently, C one is office institutional. It's commercial, professional office uses typically found in single-family areas. Preserve the areas existing residential character and permit commercial uses that are not major traffic generators. These are the two properties in question tonight. The front and back property resulting in two point two acres. You can see Sterling Oaks and Stony Landing to the east there. You can see Marvin's Department Store and, and Building Supply Store across the street. The bowling alley to the south. There is another, at the very top of the screen, at that white box is, I believe, a former engineering office, so it, it kinda fits with the feel of RC Dennis. This is the current zoning map. You can see that engineering firm is zone C one, so that fits. Everything else out there is C two. As you saw on the last screen, most of it is vacant. However, again, we, we can't ignore Marvin's or the bowling alley. And I believe the Oak, uh, a little strip center in front of the bowling alley is also there. You can see in the, the purple, on the very bottom left corner of the screen, is going to be the Dennis Track Townhomes that are three. But you can see, obviously, primarily to the west or to the east, I'm sorry, is R one residential, single-family detached. Again, as I mentioned, the, the surrounding zoning is primarily C two, either vacant or retail of some sort, with some R one to the east and even some C two retail to the west. Permitted uses in C one run a very narrow gamut with regards to boutique, retail and residential, or res, I'm sorry, restaurants under two thousand square feet, which isn't a lot, but not including gasoline filling stations, hotels, lodging houses, engineering, architectural, scientific, basically professional services, that type of use. Again, professional religious organizations, labor unions, things of that nature, hospitals, automotive repair services. Not, not a lot of traffic generators here, not a lot of large retail components, but definitely the office institutional type. Proposed is to rezone it to C two, which is a variety of general, commercial, and non-residential uses. Again, major traffic arteries and extensive areas predominantly commercial usage. The permitted uses for C two is, is basically wide open. If, if we allow it someplace in the town, for the most part, outside of industrial and residential, C two is where we can find it. Service establishment where they perform off-site services such as a landscaping firm or a plumbing service, restaurant bars, taprooms, private clubs, automotive service and car washes, wholesale warehouses, storage facilities, such as building materials like Marvin's, campgrounds, hotels, motels, mobile home dealers, fuel sales, again, like gas stations, transportation facilities, outdoor advertising. Again, it, it's, it's pretty all encompassing. That being said, and it showed up poorly, I apologize. There are five special exceptions to note in C two. Churches, non-certified modular buildings, chain link fences, parks. The one highlighted is of note. The applicant is made clear to staff that af, should this go forward, they will seek a special exception for the use mini warehouse and vehicle storage. Their intent is to have, I believe, a vehicle storage lot on these two properties for boats, trailers, RVs, and that's, that, that type. No associated mini warehouse at this time. There's an adjacent property that is seeking a special exception as well that's currently already zoned C two. That is for a internal access, climate-controlled mini warehouse with very small, I believe, four thousand or less square foot of vehicle storage area to the rear. A special exception is heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. For those that are uninitiated about that, there are seven criteria that the BZA, which is a quasi-judicial process, will hear for that use. It's a very specific request for that use for that lot. It is not a way to establish precedent. It is not a way to establish want or need. There are seven criteria in the zoning ordinance set out by the zoning ordinance that the BZA must consider. The applicant must consider, or must prove that they meet all seven. So it's, it's very specific. You know, it's, these are uses that, do they fit in C two? Probably, but we need a little bit more scrutiny, so that's what a special exception is. Transportation. When this site develops, staff will look at a, a TIA and determine whether one's necessary or not for this kind of use. Generally speaking, fifty trips is the minimum unless staff feels that, that it is a, a major hindrance, and we'll look at that at the site plan design. The two thousand and seventeen conference plan identifies the parcels to be commercial, which does include C one but also C two. The commercial aspect of the future land use map says corridors designed to accommodate auto-oriented commercial uses, principally retail services uses that are incompatible with neighborhoods, such as destination-oriented retail, where major transportation infrastructure already exists. Obviously, RC Dennis is a two-lane road, but it is a bypass. There's already commercial out there, but there's also a lot of vacant and residential, so just something to keep in mind. This is the future land use map. You can see the red highlighted and blue is the properties in question. Again, you can see the predominantly, a, a lot of the fun colors going slightly to the left of that. That is fifty-two. You can see Main Street. All, all that pink is the corner Renaissance retail overlay. Obviously, the light yellow is low-density residential, so you can see the proximity to that. But it does fit within the future land use map for the most part. It is in harmony, staff feels, with at least two of the four land use goals and policies. It does guide land use patterns by maximizing efficient use of existing infrastructure. RC Dennis being a major roadway and expanding infrastructure and as well as LU two, which guide the growth of land adjacent to existing boundaries. It has C two across the street to the north and to the south. It's hard to make that argument. We do feel, though, it is in conflict with LU three, which is developed as appropriate and compatible neighboring uses. Obviously, you have at least four properties, I believe, that is single-family detached, and we feel that this use may conflict with that depending on how the site is designed. Well, I, I apologize. Not the use, the zoning district. And so we, we feel that that may be inappropriate, but again, you do have C two to the north and south and across the street. It's, it's, it's hard to make that argument. Why I said, again, our concern is C two is a wide-open zoning district. Future plans for the applicant or allowed by right, right uses may not align with adjacent residential development. RC Dennis is not really considered a major transportation infrastructure, being two lanes, unlike fifty-two, seventeen A. But at this time, we do cautiously recommend approval for the rezoning. I'm available for any ques, uh, I'm sorry, apologize. Planning Commission did hear this. They, they did have a concern about the permit, potential uses of it should C two be assigned, as well as C two being a wide-open zoning district, but they did eventually recommend approval. First reading is March nineteenth. Second reading is currently slated for April sixteenth. I'm available if you have any questions, and I believe the applicant's here as well.
Anyone have any?
I have a few, Justin.
Yes, sir.
So are we, I guess, if, if this gets approved, what are we looking at from a front facade on this potential laydown yard or mini storage? Will it be decorative along the lines of what we were presented a while back on Broughton Road? Recession back, kind of hidden, or is this gonna be blunt in your face? Chain link fence with gravel park, mini storage, and boats and RVs and everything else there? Second part of that question is, do vehicles on our ordinance also include semi trucks? Where it would be a semi truck laydown yard?
Yes, sir. Short answer to the second part of that question, I'm unsure. I'll need to do a little bit more research. I don't believe it does, but I can double-check that.
Okay.
First part of the question is, unfortunately, the answer is yes, which I know you hadn't either, or. The Board of Zoning Appeals will, has the ability to condition this property. I know in the previous mentioned property, the applicant has worked with staff to make sure that the impacts, particularly the front facade impacts of this are mitigated to the best extent practical, and it's up to the Board, Board of Zoning Appeals. One of the standards is, is this harmonious and compatible with adjacent land uses? Obviously, a chain link fence with a gravel lot is not compatible with those on RC Dennis. However, should the applicant be unwilling to work with staff and appease the BZA, the BZA is gonna be left with a decision of, does this fit or not, and it would be ultimately up to them. Unfortunately, our standards are not very robust, and because there's no structure, our architectural standards are null and void at this point on that. But I will do everything in my power to make sure that it's not a chain link fence with gravel. I just don't have that ability right now. One of the things that our zoning ordinance that we look to tackle in the future is we do not have any landscape standards along the road frontage to which the property is addressed. I think that's a huge miss, but unfortunately, these are the rules that we have to play with right now. So I, I, I don't have a great answer for you at this point. I will say that the applicant has shown a propensity to work with staff. They've met with us multiple times. They are taking a wait-and-see approach on the adjacent property with the BZA special exception request, as well as tonight's rezoning hearing before they spend significant resources to design the site. But we can work with them to make sure we get the best product. I just don't have any guarantees at this point.
Where is the adjacent property that you're talking about in relevance to this?
It will be the property to the north, the one parcel highlighted in red directly to the north of these two.
Right or left? To the right?
To, to the north.
Uh, that way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
So the two parcels beside Oaks Mall.
Yes.
One thing, and, and I'm, Justin, you may correct me on this, but I don't believe chain link is allowed. I think the only district that can chain link is allowed is in the industrial district now.
My, my position with this is we have neighbors, obviously nice established neighborhoods behind this and up and down that corridor. And I can see where a storage facility would be great considering the growth that's gonna take place across the street from Marvin's with the townhomes. There may be HOAs in place in Sterling Oaks and Stony Landing that would enable the residents there to park their RVs or boats there. My concern would be semi trucks pulling in and out of there on all the times. And maybe the applicant, if you're here, you could address that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Technically, the buyer, the applicant here with me as well, so the paperwork actually didn't, but, um, yes, I am a local resident with my wife.
If, if we could, I apologize. If we can come to the podium and then state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Flannery, and I am a resident of Somerville. I live at two oh six West Pine Street. And I am the applicant looking to open the storage facility for boats, RVs, and things for similar here in Monks Corner. To address your question on commercial vehicles, specifically semi trucks, our goal was actually to not allow any commercial vehicles, because we did not want the in-and-out traffic. We're more looking to cater to the local residents that live in an HOA and have a boat, wanna get out on the water, the lakes, but just cannot park that boat in their HOA. Or if, you know, they have an RV and wanna take trips from time to time, but just they can't do that because they live in a townhome, they live in an HOA, somewhere in the area where that just isn't a possibility for them. We're looking to allow those residents to have that option. So as far as a lot of traffic coming from trucks or trailers and such, we actually don't wanna allow any commercial vehicles whatsoever, no landscape trailers, semis, anything like that. So hopefully, that addresses your question.
It does. Have you gotten into the design phase of what it may potentially look like at this point, or?
Yes, we have, and working with my wife, she has a, a good eye for design, so she has not let me cut any corners there. She wants to have a nice landscaped wooden fence out front with some uplighting and palm trees. And we wanna make it a place that people are proud to keep their stuff, feel secure and safe, and isn't just like a parking lot on the side of the road that, you know, we want people to, we wanna take a little bit of pride of ownership in our community and, and make sure that reflects. We also are willing to work with you guys to hopefully provide some amenities. If we can provide, you know, ATMs or ice machines or electric vehicle charging stations or anything along those lines that you think would better fit the community, we are all ears to seeing how we can best provide a service that fits that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, what about the lighting? What kind of lighting? Because you do have the homes right behind it.
Right. So we have thought about that, and we've noticed that what the bowling alley next door does, because it actually shares one of those property lines that we would share with that home there at the end of the cul-de-sac. They left a nice barrier of trees between them and those houses, so we would like to do that. And for lighting, we noticed there is a commercial space over by Lux Espresso Bar in Somerville, and they have these nice solar-powered lights that go on the fence, and they only shine down, so you actually don't notice the lights are on when you're looking from outside it, but when you're inside, you can see just fine. So we're looking for something along that, because we don't want a lot of light pollution. We're not looking to draw a lot of attention to ourselves and necessarily have, you know, put all these boats and stuff on display. We're kinda looking just to be a nice little spot in the community that looks good and is convenient for people to get in and out, so they can go out on the lake on the weekend with their kids and whatever else they wanna do.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Mayor, I think the gentleman over there wants to say something.
Yeah, I mean, with all the.
Hold up. You have to come up and introduce yourself. Name and address, please.
My name's Taylor Zachary. I live right down the road, thirty thirty-seven Maple Leaf Drive in Monks Corner. One concern I do have is with all the development that we've been having in the area, it's a lot of corporate backing companies coming in and just kinda taking away opportunity from local folks. Now, is this any corporate backing or is it a private venture?
This is a private venture. We do have a partner, and he also lives in Somerville.
All right.
But it's another family, a young family, just like us.
All right, none of you all, sir.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Noted. It passed. All right, we also have another first reading by title only. Consider an annexation, AN dash twenty-three dash oh-three, and zoning map amendment request for nine point nine nine acres located on Highway fifty-two at Westbury Lane, TMS one eighty-one dash zero-zero dash zero-one dash zero-twenty-four. Plan development to allow for up to sixty-seven dwelling units. Justin?
Yes, sir. So as the mayor mentioned, it's for nine point nine acres from Flex One in the county, which is an agricultural district to plan development. Again, it's currently zoned Flex One. Some of the permitted uses by, with, without conditions are agricultural, ecotourism, residential, and some assembly. Everything else that staff could find in the Berkeley County zoning ordinance requires some sort of conditions. Now, what those conditions are, we're, we're not experts on that, but those are the five by right uses or four by right uses that they could use without conditions. A planned development in contrast is to ensure a development of mixed use, provide a range of harmonious land uses and preservation of natural features, as well as the relationship that, of existing and/or future amenities. that of existing and/or future amenities, supporting businesses and others. And again, it's an alternative zoning negotiated district. So it's, it's primarily designed for larger, we, larger developments to make sure that they're all encompassing. So you park once, and you can visit all these different things, or you can walk from place to place from your house. That's, that's the intent of PD. So think Fox Bank, Kane Bay, Nexon, things of those sizes. And those are, that's really the design of a PD. That being said, the property is highlighted in red. You can see the Riverstone across the street, which is almost built out. You can see Halsted, which is currently under construction. I believe that's a townhome community. To the south, you can see the Oakley Point development, which is almost built out as well. Those coming into play in a minute when we ran our analysis on the density. This is a zoomed in photo, and you can see there's a couple of trailers on there, I believe. I believe there's a telecommunications tower. Again, most of the area is largely residential or rural. There's not a lot of sidewalks. There are no sidewalks on 52, so the walkability of something like a townhomes is very limited. Again, with the zoning removed, you can see mainly single family detached. The Halsted property to the south is townhomes. Flex 1 is the current zoning to the north, which is vacant. You have a funeral home, which is general commercial in Burke County. Flex 1 in Burke County to the south, which has the cell phone tower, so I apologize about that. The east is Flex 1 and general commercial, both vacant, and to the west is vacant Flex 1. Across the street, you obviously have residential. The residential tract, as per the most recent plan by the applicant, shows about nine acres of residential with about .46 acres of commercial. They are requesting a senior restricted residential type use. That has some staff concerns with regard to our ability to enforce it, not so much our authority, but our ability, our practical ability. Commercial tract currently is requested by the applicant be C2. And as I mentioned in my last presentation, C2 runs the gamut of every use, from gas station, repair garages, retail sales, restaurants, drive-ins, drive-throughs, I'm sorry, pool halls, liquor stores, overnight, trailer courts, car washes. It does not allow currently for any special exceptions. This is the most recent application, concept plan. You can see one entrance to the north. You can see a little bit of open space in that top right corner. It's about 67 units, I believe. There's a second entrance to the south, and there's a little bit of commercial with the parking adjacent to that northern entrance. The density, again, when we use very raw numbers, because we need to treat, we need a baseline, and we need an apples to apples comparison. So when you take the property of 9.9 acres, or roughly 10, and we subdivided the .46 acres of commercial, roughly we were left with 67 units on about nine acres, which equaled about 7.03 dwellings per acre. Now, comparatively speaking to those other three developments I spoke on, the Riverstone with about 31 acres has 109 dwelling units, so 3.48. Oakley Point, which is significantly larger, but also has 300, three times the size of Riverstone, still benefits from a 2.2 acre dwelling unit. And the Halsted PD, which is the townhomes, does have a commercial aspect to it as well, is roughly about 70 acres with 318 units, which is still about 200, 2.08 dwelling units per acre. So this is a significant increase. Again, transportation, staff would look at that. More than likely, this would trigger TIA based on the trip generation, but we would look at that when the site was fully developed, or at least designed, I should say. Definition of a planned development per the state code, obviously, is a, to allow for a mix of uses. Obviously, a development agreement of anything 25 acres or higher is required and permissible. And then obviously, we do feel that it's in harmony with one of the land use. In the 2017 conference plan, which we're currently under, it does designate this property to be medium density. Medium density is to provide a transition from low density suburban neighborhoods to already developed residential commercial areas. Again, the closest, there, there's not a lot of commercial within earshot of this, and serve as infield development. As you saw on a couple of previous slides, there's a lot of vacant land around this. So infield's not, not a strong definition of what this is seeking to do. But again, per the comp plan, medium density seeks to do walkable communities with a system of interconnected trails and sidewalks. With nothing to the north, south, and west of this, it's, it's hard to see this connecting to anything else. With no sidewalks on 52, it's self-contained. It's not exactly the definition of medium density or planned development. This is the property, as you can see, it is zoned, Flex 1, and the county designation shows that. The area pixelated, obviously, is a county comp plan. You can see the properties across the street, the orange, which is medium density, and the light yellow being low density. It is in harmony with town continuing efforts to go guide growth of land adjacent to existing boundaries. But we do not recommend it for planned development. Generally speaking, staff has had a, a history of using about 25 acres as a threshold. It's not a requirement, but again, planned developments are designed to be all encompassing neighborhoods of sufficient size, Fox Bank being one of our largest PDs. We do not feel that it aligns with residential medium density, and as that requires adjacent residential and commercial areas that you can walk to, you're not crossing 52, and everything else is vacant, and new neighborhoods become walkable communities with a system of interconnected trails, as I mentioned before. We feel that density is 51% greater than anything else in the area. Riverstone is 3.4 acres, or 48 dwellings per acre, whereas the proposed would be 7.03, and it's 71% larger than anything single family attached, which would be the Halsted, which is 2.08 dwellings per acre. We do not feel that it fits the future land use map 2017 comp plan. Deed restrictions are not enforceable by the town, and what I mean by that is, it's not practical. When a building permit comes in, I do not have the ability to stop it based on who's buying it, because nine times out of 10, DR Horton, Lennar, anybody else, the building permit does not tell me who's buying it, and I'm not included in those decisions. So when a builder builds a home, single family detached or attached, we just know who the builder is. We have no idea who the future occupant is. That handles, that's handled downstream, and thus, we are cut out of that, that decision. So anything that we do is going to be reactive, and it's very difficult to move people out of homes, particularly for a zoning ordinance. So we highly recommend that that is not something that we enforce. So when I say it's not enforceable, that's, it's not practically, it's not practical for staff to enforce that. Again, the, once the other entitlements are done, you know, we're, we're hoping that this is done by a CCR's restrictive covenants. Again, the, we don't sign off on that. We don't hold building permits for CCRs being 55 and up. It's, it's not something we generally do. It's not reasonable for the town to ensure deed restrictions. It's not something that we want to get in the middle of, that's a civil matter. Connectivity concerns, again, they show two entrances. Staff does have concerns about how many entrances SC DOT, particularly that close together, are going to allow. But again, without a TIA, we won't know that for sure. Without the site being designed, we won't have the TIA. So at this point, staff does recommend denial. Planning Commission, as in your staff report, their concerns were access to 52, the number of parking, particularly parking for guests. Obviously, the ordinance requires two parking spaces per unit, as we've seen in other townhome communities, that's not enough. If you have any more than two people living in one plot, if you have a party, Super Bowl party, if you have a basketball goal, it gets very difficult on small streets like that to enforce. And then obviously, the density is a concern. So at that point, Planning Commission did recommend denial. This is the first reading, and we are slated to go to public hearing April 19. I know the applicant and property owners are here. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
What can they do with it right now, Flex 1 with the county?
Outside those four ecotourism, residential, agricultural, and, and assembly, staff is not an expert on the zoning for Burke County, so I'd have to defer to them. As I mentioned earlier, they do allow for other uses with conditions, but those conditions are use specific, and there are several of them. So I'm not sure what those conditions are and how thorough they are.
Justin, as far as the plan, what do we see as a acceptable use? What, what is a vision on this property? If, if not this, giving, giving the owner some highlight as to what we would like to see on a property like this?
I think with the, the comp plan we currently have, as well as the, the future comp plan we're considering, I think 52 is, is primed, in my professional opinion, to be a commercial corridor. With a lot of this size, I, I don't think it really meets the threshold. I think it's one or the other. It stays residential or it goes commercial. I think a mix of use such as this is really shoehorning a lot into a small package and, and not really, it, it doesn't take the strong points of what a PD is designed to do and emphasize those. It, it, it should be one of the others, in, in my professional opinion.
So, looking at this map, where is the commercial aspect on this property?
It is this little area, .46 acres, this building right here, 7,000 square foot building, parking adjacent to the entrance.
And as far as parking requirement ratio, do we have any idea right now as to whether or not that's even enough? When we start looking at handicap parking, accessibility, do we know that there's enough there? I know we don't have a full...
Using a, a really rough guess, our parking ordinance runs the gamut from 200 to 300 square, one space per 200 to 300 square feet. If you cut that in the middle of 250 square feet, which is generally what we use for retail, they would need 28 parking spaces. Generally speaking, with the handicap, just to touch on that, handicap is already calculated into the overall number. And generally speaking, that, that's a ratio by building code, so we would make sure they have enough. But at the end of the day, if they can't provide enough parking from the zoning, this, the site will more than likely develop. In my experience, the commercial aspect develops after the residential, if at all. Halsted has been approved for several years now, and we have not heard anything about their commercial aspect, but they are getting under construction, the residential. So I think it's premature to say whether they have enough parking or not now, but it is a concern.
That density, when we're looking at the density right now, generally speaking, with comparable properties in the area, what is that density, where should that be more in line with? Because right now, it's 7, 7.03, I believe you said?
Yes, sir.
So, where is that a little bit more realistic?
Um...
Because I know Riverstone and the Oakley Point, we're, we're comparing to re, single family homes versus...
I, I think if we're using what's been developed recently, particularly the three across the street adjacent to this, I, I think five dwellings per acre would be pushing it. Now, again, as, as I mentioned in a previous case, I'm, I'm not fearful of density in the right locations, and Moncks Corner, obviously, is separate from other jurisdictions I've worked, and it's really up to y'all whether y'all think that's appropriate. But if it was me, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable at about five or less dwellings per acre, again, within line of the two and the three that's already out there.
And Justin, do we know if a wetlands delineation has been done on this property yet?
I believe some have been shown on the plan. I think it's about an acre, if I'm not mistaken. There is in the packet, there a wetlands delineation study. I can't remember exactly what it says, but it was part of the packet.
And did that decrease any of the units on what is currently on the plan?
No, sir. No, sir. They, on, on the most recent concept plan, I believe they took that into account.
Couple of last questions. On the, on the neighbors, do we, have we heard from any of the neighbors of this site and gotten any, gotten any response from them? And also, has there been any community input done by the developer on this to see what the temperature is with the, with the home sites around it?
Staff has not heard directly from anybody regarding this, this concept or this project. I believe at the first meeting in November, there was a resident who spoke in favor of 55 and up restricted home, and I believe he lived across the street. He did not return back for the January planning commission. Outside that, staff has not heard directly from anybody. I am not aware of any outreach by the developer applicant to the area regarding this concept.
I think my biggest concern on this project, and I'll leave with this, is we've got access coming straight onto 52. There is no yield lane that it appears as such right now. You've got 55 and older pulling out into an area that is going to be heavily traveled at high rates of speeds in most cases. I think that would be my biggest concern that I'd want to talk to the applicant about, is, is how we, how we foresee that as part of the development plan. And then I'll yield. Thank you.
Justin, I got a question. Did the applicant reach out to the county about rezoning that property from Flex 1?
I don't have any direct knowledge about that. I will say that that was a question specifically asked by Planning Commissioner, and the answer, if, if I remember correctly from the minutes and being in the meeting, was no.
Anyone else?
So, I have something. Is the applicant willing to decrease the density to get it more back in line with...
Staff has had limited conversations. I believe the applicant or the engineer, and, and I, I would defer to them and let them speak on that. The, I believe the engineer, Chris Nato, stated that that would be a question he would pass along to the, the applicant or the, the developer, but staff is unaware their flexibility regarding that. I will say, they did start with 70 units, and they reduced it down to 67, but how much further they're willing to go would be a question for them.
Real quick, a PD is usually 25 acres, and this is 9.99. Have we ever allowed a PD for this small of acreage before?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Justin, could we hear from, from the applicant? Thank you.
Please put your name and address for the record, please.
Brandon Gaskins with the Moore and Van Allen Law Firm, 78 Wentworth Street, Charleston. Good evening, Mayor Hamilton, members of Town Council. I am here on behalf of the applicant, American Star Development, SCLLC, and we're also joined by the property owner, Ms. Plinkley. Happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll address your question first, Councilman Ware. We are open to having whatever discussions that are necessary to address your concerns. The, the applicant went down this PD route based on direction from staff and included this commercial component of it, which obviously affects all of the, the density and the land usage on it. So we're, we're open to having any conversations, addressing any concerns that you have with respect to uses, traffic impact, architectural standards. So happy to address that, and, and potentially, a decrease in density could be possible. Of course, you know, it has to make economic sense, but...
That's right. Mr. Gaskins, I got a question. Do you know why they didn't reach out to the county to rezonate with, through them versus us?
I, I can't say specifically, but I, I know when they first approached the town, they had a positive discussion with Mr. Westbrook, and they thought, based on that discussion, that it would be supported by staff, which is why they went that direction. At the same time, they were going through a rezoning not far down the road through the county, which, with a much more intense and dense plan for townhomes. So based on that experience, we think we could go through that rezoning process with the county and, and probably end up with a comparable or perhaps more dense project.
Jay has something? Anyone else?
I don't know, Jay's writing.
Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I still have some questions on it. I mean, in terms of, of the traffic concerns and the... Sorry, my mic's not on. In, in terms of the traffic concerns and, and dwelling units, commercial units, I think there's a lot still going on that I have questions on. Is, if, is, if there is any additional information y'all would like to share before we, before we move forward? Feel free.
Yes, I'll be happy to address the traffic impact. As, as you guys know, to, under your code, a traffic impact analysis is required if the use is going to generate more than 50 trips per peak hour. And right now, the residential component does not meet that threshold because we are dealing with age restricted housing, which creates a lot less traffic than single family detached homes. It is less than half of what single family detached homes generate. So you're basically looking at less than .5 trips per senior unit. So if we have 67, you're below, you're around approximately 30 trips in a, in a peak hour. Of course, the commercial aspect of it could increase that, and you have the authority as Town Council to require, or the Town Administrator has the authority, to require a traffic impact analysis, even if those thresholds are not met, and certainly y'all could require that in this case. I've written to y'all a number of concerns that we have with staff's analysis. Happy to go into that. I think the primary issue that we have is the... the purported inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And I think it's important not just to look at what you have now under the existing plan, but what you're doing with the future comp plan, which you gave first reading to, um, at, at your last meeting. And it, and it creates a future land use group of the highway corridor overlay district, which is where this property is. It says that upfront should be commercial, and behind that, it should, it can be higher intensity or higher density residential. Even calling for multifamily. This is a medium-density project, does not go to those levels. But once that comprehensive plan is adopted, I, I think it's realistic to set, to have people come in with multifamily projects. So, we think you shouldn't be looking just at the existing comprehensive plan, but look at the, the work that's already been done with this proposed update to the comprehensive plan and what your vision is, that you gave first reading to at the last meeting. Because we believe this project is entirely consistent with that plan. But in, in many ways, it's more responsible because of the age-restricted housing. It is going to produce a lot less trips than some, than, than the high-density uh, projects that the comp plan calls for. Also, less impact on other infrastructure, including schools. Obviously, age-restricted housing is not going to produce a lot of, uh, students. So, we think this is a responsible way to move forward consistent with the comprehensive plan that, that y'all just gave first reading to.
What, what about amenities? Are you gonna offer a clubhouse, walking trails, park, anything for the residents within the community?
So, that, that is certainly a possibility, and I think what's good about the PD option is it gives you guys the control of what's going, what type of amenities can be in there. Under, if it was just zoned, whatever the base zoning, there would be no requirement for amenities. But that's something that we're willing to engage with. Of course, the amenities have to make sense for an age-restricted community. Does having a, a large swimming pool make sense? Probably not. But there are certainly other amenities that can be worked into this, into this project. And we're happy to have those discussions with, with you guys. Maybe have, have a variety of options that could be included.
And do you know anything in regards to age-restricted neighborhoods? Do you have any documentation or, or any knowledge, statistically speaking, on the demand need for that in the area right now?
I, not statistically, but I, I can tell you anecdotally that we're seeing this more and more. I'm involved in a, in another project, um, where this, uh, I don't have to get into the boring backstory, but it was part of a litigation with the city of Charleston. And as a compromise, uh, the parties were able to agree on this age-restricted, um, product. And, and a lot of why it was wanted by the city of Charleston is because it has less impact on traffic. It has less impact on other infrastructure. But you're seeing it across the state. You know, places like Sun City, um, I think Margaritaville down in Jasper County. We're seeing more of these. And it, and it makes sense as, as people get older. They want to be in a community with, with people their own age, with whom they have common interests. And that's why I think the concerns about the enforceability of these restrictive covenants are misplaced and misguided. The enforceability is going to be, um, handled by the residents who voluntarily choose to live in these communities because it's what they, it's where they want to be. And it's just like any other HOA that has covenants, that you guys require at, to maintain roads, to maintain stormwater facilities. It is in their benefit to maintain these types of, um, facilities so that they have a nice, a nice place to live. On top of that, I will tell you that these restrictions have to be imposed, um, depending on the type of, of property it is, whether it's owned fee simple or whether it's owned by one and rented out, is that federal law requires you to have these mechanisms and to enforce them. Otherwise, you're in violation of federal housing law. So, um, we think that that's, um, a not, not a, a legitimate concern. But even if it is, this PD can be easily amended to say, well, we're not going to issue a CO until we see the deed restriction in there. So, I, I really don't think that is a concern at all.
Brandon?
Do you have any idea on price points right now?
We do not, no.
I don't know.
Mayor, if I may, one thing I'd like to address is about the future, uh, comp plan that's in process. The other thing it also contemplates is the 25-acre minimum becomes a 50-acre minimum. So, if you're gonna go to the new comp plan, then that will, that would also be impacted here as well.
I, I, I do want to address that because I, I think originally, it was misstated, and I think the suggestion is, is incorrect as well. There is no minimum requirement for a PD. Your code does not provide for it. State law does not provide for it. What your code says is that if it is a negotiated PD district, and it is over 25 acres, then a development agreement is required. But there is no minimum threshold of acreage for a PD. And that was what was presented to the planning commission, and we think, you know, as I stated in my letter, that, that impacted this process. It tainted it somewhat and puts us in a bad position. But to be clear, there is no minimum requirement.
I, I don't want to get in a back and forth, but my point is, is in the comp plan, it does contemplate that there will be a minimum requirement of 50 acres.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to say something. I've taken all this in, and I've heard valid, valid points on both sides. And I've always been an advocate for landowners to do what they want with their property. However, my concern with this property and, you know, taking into account what some of the other council members have said is, are we setting that precedent up here? Even though the, the law is not implied, the law is not written, are we setting that precedent that a nine-acre tract, a five-acre tract, a four-acre tract is going to fall into our PD plan up here? And that's, that's my biggest concern right now. Another concern that I have is where this, where this, um, development is being proposed, what would stop someone who's 50 or older? Because that's what it's going to be, correct?
55.
55 or older. What would stop them from going to this neighborhood and going to one of the new townhome neighborhoods that we have going up around town? Would it be just the HOAs? Because a lot of these other developments around town that are producing townhomes with hardy plank, with HOAs, with ponds, with amenities, what would attract someone 55 and older? And I'm not far from that age. That's why I'm asking. Why would I be there versus in town where I can hop, skip, and jump over to Walmart or Piggly Wiggly or wherever? Whereas this is, for the time being, in a very remote location.
On the outskirts of both ends. It's right in the middle of.
Both of the growth patterns, and the growth is going to close in. I, I do respect that. But again, my biggest concern sitting here and listening to the other remarks is that we are potentially setting ourselves up for a precedent of small land tracts for PDs. And that is something I cannot go back to my constituents with or that I could personally live with.
Well, certainly open to having another discussion, but I'll, I'll go back to where I started. They went the PD route at the direction of staff. I don't, I don't think it was ever their primary intent to include this commercial component in there. But that's the direction that they received, so that's where they went. So, happy to have that discussion, discussion whether it's better without having a PD and a mixed use. And some straight zoning may be more appropriate. But, uh, to answer the second part of your question, you know, I, I think that's going to be driven a lot by the market, the product that's put there. But more based on your desire or somebody's desire to live in a community with people of the same age, based on common interest. Which a lot of the others, as far as I know, there's, there's nothing in Monk's Corner that's comparable to that, that has the same restrictions. So, I think that would be a driving force.
Don't we have the 55 community right across from the hotel? And don't we have another one that's planned to go up across the street from Roper?
No, sir, that one.
I'm sorry?
That, the one across the street from Roper is no longer in play.
It's no longer in play. I understand, thank you, Brandon. I'm just, I'm just voicing my opinion.
Brandon, why is this, uh... I'm having a hard time with the, with the residential aspect on this. You know, why would this not be a commercial venture? I know you said you added the commercial venture in order to accommodate staff recommendation. I see it as more of a commercial track than a residential track. Is that something that the developer is open to? Or, or are we dealing with right now a developer who is a, who is a residential builder?
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak with, for the developer on that point because I haven't had that discussion. But what I will say is they are a residential developer. I think the demand right now is for residential product. I think Mr. Westbrook referred to that, that the commercial demand is probably not there right now. So, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
So, what... You know, it's like Mr. Westbrook said. What makes sure it holds to a 55 and older community? You know, my mom has it, and then leaves it down to me, and I give it to my kids. You know, you're moving younger generations and they're into a residential community. I mean, what, what's going to stop that from happening?
So, there, there is a certain percentage of residents who can be below 55. Don't hold me to this, but it may be around 85% that it has to be above 55. And, uh, and somebody else can own it. But the residents, or the overwhelming majority of the residents, have to be over 55. And again, depending on whether it's owned fee simple or it's owned by a, a property manager who rents out the units, they are required by law to either put a deed restriction in or to establish rules and regulations to make sure that, that threshold is exceeded, that it stays above that certain level of residents over 55. And if it does not do that, then they are engaging in housing discrimination under federal housing laws. So, the federal law actually requires that these provisions be enforced.
But we as a town do not enforce that, correct?
But, uh, one thing I want to say is so far as this age restriction is concerned, as far as the ordinances and everything are concerned, it does not matter. It could be age-restricted, it could not be age-restricted. That's not going to change the analysis. Even if it could, we feel, you know, we don't feel like we should be in the enforcement business of who, who lives in those houses. But even if we did, it doesn't change the calculus to determine whether there's a recommendation or, for approval or not. I think that it's, it can be seen as an amenity to provide a product that may be needed, and I understand that. But so far as the analysis is concerned, it doesn't play in either way.
And, and I think I agree with that. I, we're certainly not coming to the town and saying, hey, we're going to put these age restrictions in, and we're going to look to the town to enforce it. That's not what we're requiring. And I think for the most part, it is irrelevant to your consideration, except for when you're looking at impacts. Because the, the traffic impacts are going to be way lower with this type of, uh, with this type of development than a single-family detached.
So, basically, what we're really voting on tonight is, A, do we annex it in? And B, do we rezone it to be PD? Is that correct?
Correct.
So...
But essentially, I'm sorry, were you gonna go?
How, how would this play out if it was not being rezoned to PD?
It, it would depend on what it was being zoned to.
Right. Yeah, and I understand that. But for a development like this?
If it was, if they wanted to rezone it to commercial, you know, a straight zone, that's a fairly simple analysis. If they want to rezone it to residential, then the other parts of ordinances kick in with regard to what we require and how we analyze that. You know, we, we assume everything comes in as, as our one. And so, then, you know, the, the process would kick in by, you know, what kind of things are, they're going to be doing to the community to improve it, to be able to get a higher density that they're asking for, which is what you've seen in the other developments you've approved.
I mean, I mean, just me looking at this, I mean, you got 10 acres with a half of it being commercial. Is, this does not look like a commercial... It looks more like a residential area to me, not zoning it to a commercial area.
Yeah, the primary use is going to be residential use with one component of it, a small, a small component of it being commercial, which provides the mixed use that you need to have a PD under law.
I, I think following Councilman Ware is, is, instead of the PD, I mean, I would rather be looking at this as you coming in and going under just for residential zoning. You know, the PD is going to be a sticking point for me. I just don't think that we're going to do, or I'm not personally going to be able to support a 10-acre PD. So, that's where I'm at with it. So, um, might be something to look at for something down the road for you, not going the PD route. So, anything else? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to deny based on the information that we have at this time.
Did y'all hear that? I forgot the microphone, sorry. Make a motion to deny based on the information that we've received at this time. Should the applicant want to come back again? I mean, it's something that I'll certainly revisit and discuss. But I think at this time, with what's presented to us, that's where we've got to be on that.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's denied. All right. Consideration of bids. Whitesville Road and Jolly Lane Drainage Project. Administrator Lord?
Hold on a second while I get my clicker. Yes, sir. So, um, the council will remember, the improvement of California Branch has, has been a major drainage project that we've been working on for the past several years. And it began with the FEMA grant that we received to acquire several lots in the area. And those are highlighted by the light blue. Those are the, the now town-owned lots that we acquired with the FEMA grant. And then the circles indicate the crossings on Jolly, Whitesville, and Winter going from left to right. So, the town received the FEMA grant to acquire those properties that were regularly inundated with floodwater. And then, as part of that engineering study, it also recommended upsizing the culverts, as I call them. Although, I've, I've learned the DOT calls them bridges. So, these three bridges need to be reconfigured to allow more volume of water to pass through and therefore, it continues downstream without being backed up. As you can imagine, upgrading one of them or two of them, you still end up with a bottleneck. So, you really need to do all three. So, the one that's highlighted in green on Winter Street, the town received funding allocation from the County Transportation Commission to be able to do that. And that is now a DOT project. We've engineered it, we've handed it over to them. So, they're going through their process to be able to get it, um, done. So, that they will be doing the letting, they will be overseeing the, uh, construction and, and separate from us because it's funded through the CDC. The two projects highlighted in red on Jolly and Winter, uh, on Whitesville, excuse me. The Whitesville Crossing is partially funded by a grant through the Rural Infrastructure Authority. And the Jolly, you allocated ARPA money to pay for that. So, the grant that we received for the Whitesville Road Crossing, we received about two years ago. And it's, um, it's a $319,503 grant. There's a, a match commitment of $186,200 from the town. So, it gives you a total project cost of $505,703. That's what we had anticipated two years ago. Fast forward, although it wasn't that fast, two years, permitting challenges, redesign requirements by the SC DOT. And so, that project came in at $857,703. And so, that project came in at $857,777. And we did bid these together to be able to take advantage of scale and get a lower price. But, just for analysis purpose, we did break it out so you can see what they would be. So, that does come in about $352,000, not about exactly, $352,074 over what is already either allocated by the town as match or the grant from RIA. Now, I will say that we have gotten an extension from RIA on the grant. It actually was supposed to end at the end of last year, but they didn't give us an extension because of how we were progressing through the project. I do believe if we don't move forward on this, they will pull the money. And so, it's gonna be one of those, we're gonna have to use or lose it, even though the project came in well over what we expected it to. And a large part of that is because of the engineering requirements of DOT exceeded what was expected. But, we'll get into that. The Jolly Road, on the other hand, you had set aside $575,000 from the ARPA grant to pay for that. And that one came in much better at $599.66. So, you're only $24,000 over budget on that. The bids went out in January and were received February 28th... I'm sorry, 29th. And we received three bids. The low bid is from Trulock Construction, $1,456,843.69. As you can see, the bid of the three bids are pretty close together, which means it's all gonna be a good bid. And Trulock is a company that has done work for us before, and we expect that they would follow through with it. So, our recommendation is to approve the bids and to approve the additional funding that will be necessary to complete these projects. So, you have $189,873 available in the Stormwater Fund, which is set aside for projects like this, over and above what's already been set aside for this. And that would relieve $186,268, which we would recommend coming from the ARPA fund. So, our recommendation is to approve it and to approve the commitment on the additional funding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Old business. There's no old business to be brought before council. We're going to the public input stage. If you signed up, I'll call your name. Please come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. This time is to give citizens a chance for the town officials to receive your feedback. If you would like any follow-up and have checked the box on the sign-up sheet, someone from the appropriate department will be in touch. This meeting is for the council and myself to do the business of the town of Monk's Corner, so discussion on what you address tonight may be limited. Thank you. Our first speaker is Mr. Joey Edens. Please give your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Joe. Yeah, Joey Edens. I live at 218 Reed Street. And Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you and this other fine cast of characters here that I've known most of my entire life. I come to you tonight because we've had a great concern in our neighborhood over in the Mitten Park area off of Broughton Road for some time now. And I kick myself in the butt daily for not coming here three years ago when a good friend of mine was nearly killed in that neighborhood because of traffic issues. One, I want to thank the chief and his staff for stepping up and putting patrols over in our area. And I think we've been running quite a few blue light specials over there lately. Somebody made a comment, and I made a statement about Kitfield area using our neighborhood as a bypass around Broughton Road. And that is not... It's absolutely true. They do. I think most of the... Probably most of the people you pulled over in that area were from Kitfield, not necessarily from our neighborhood. And with this new subdivision being built back there, it's just gonna continue to be a problem. And what I'm here for is the fact that we have three cross streets in our neighborhood. Division Street and Hill Street, Reed Street and Hill Street, and Reed Street and Sandy Drive, where there's only a set of stop signs, not a four-way stop. And people are blowing through these stop signs, not paying attention, one iota to what's going on. We had an accident over there last week that two children went in the vehicle. I don't know all the details of what went on. I do know I did drive up on it after the fact. And I and other people in my neighborhood feel like that speed humps at these crossings, along with some signage reminding these people, "You're getting ready to come to a stop sign, you need to stop." My wife's a schoolteacher. Many times, I've left there and I hear sirens, not knowing whether she'd go get one of the people that's been hit. And then, one of my good friends who got hit three years ago hit him so hard, it flipped him over into ditch. Thankfully, he got out of it unscathed. But, something needs to be done, needs to be done now. I did ask about this three years ago and was flat-told it wasn't gonna happen because the DOT wouldn't allow it to happen. And now, I'm finding out that that's not necessarily true. And I would appreciate your due diligence in checking into this so that we can stop this. The chief cannot have his men over there 24/7 every day. And I don't think four-way stops is the answer. I think putting speed humps, because these people are coming off of Broughton Road. Every action that I've seen occur is our cars that are coming off of Broughton Road into our neighborhood are just blowing through those stop signs. So, I would appreciate anything y'all can do.
Thank you.
And secondly, we don't need no more damn houses in Monk's Corner.
Thank you. That is something that Jeff is looking into, and we have a budget retreat next week, and we are going to talk about it with council. So, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion? This Taylor Zachary, I believe he spoke earlier. Yes. Yes, okay. So, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.